All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. It is November 6, 2019, 7 o'clock. Something new that we're gonna do, that we are going to do on the agenda tonight, is we are going to start off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I can have everybody stand up. Face the flag. And I guess I'll lead off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, then, has everybody had a chance to take a look at tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yep.
And we do have one slight change, if you notice, in the addition to the agenda. We have a couple of extra things for the Planning Commission. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions to the Planning Commission report tonight, under 7A. Second. Pat was second. Any other further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then, we will go ahead, now, do I need to close out the meeting? Or is this right into it? Okay. All right, and then we'll go ahead and go into the Wellhead Protection Plan informational
Good evening. I'm Karen Vaz. I'm with the Minnesota Department of Health. I work in our drinking water protection section, and specifically, in our source water protection unit. So my job at the Health Department is to work with cities or public water supplies to develop wellhead protection plans. Those are plans that assist the city in protecting their source of drinking water from any potential contaminants that might be out there and have... And so, the first part of that, well, the cities had a wellhead protection plan for the past 10 years. Back in 2010, the plan was approved by the Health Department. We worked with Jim and staff from the City of Watkins to develop a wellhead protection plan. And the state wellhead rule requires that those plans be amended or updated every 10 years. So about two years ago, we met with the City of Watkins and the City of Eden Valley, myself and John Woodside, the hydrogeologist, and he went and he updated what we refer to as the recharge area for the city's water supply wells. So I think you have a map. Kind of looks like this. There's a number of them. There's one that's really gray, and it just talks about, yep, that one. Yep, that map there, I don't have, I handed them all out earlier today, but that's the map that kind of shows what the previous wellhead protection area looked like prior to the updating of the wellhead protection plan over the past couple of years. So basically, you can see that the area has changed significantly in size, and that is due to the fact that, since we did the wellhead protection plan 10 years ago, we've done additional water testing, and we did what we call isotope sampling. So we did some testing of the waters in the ditch next to the wellfields. We did some tritium sampling, and we did some chloride and bromide sampling. And all three of those are water quality parameters that kind of tell us whether or not things that are happening on the land surface are actually getting down into the groundwater. So like, tritium would be something, that's an isotope that came from nuclear testing in the 50s, and it went up into the atmosphere and it came down with rain molecules and gets down into the groundwater. There's no health effects, it's not a concern for as far as being contaminant, but what it does is it kind of dates the water, so that if we have levels of tritium in the groundwater, we know then that that water has since been recharged since the 50s. So we would say then that's young water, 'cause it's, you know, within the last 60 years or so. If there's no tritium in the groundwater, which we had seen originally, then we think that the water's a little bit older. So we had tritium in the groundwater, and then we sampled the ditches and we sampled the wells, and the signature of both of those water sources were similar. So that tells us that when the city pumps its wells, it's drawing water from the surface, and that potentially, the water in the ditches is recharging the aquifer and then being pumped up by the pumps in the water supply wells. So we've got that. And then we also had chloride in the water supply, which is really not, there's no health risks there, but yet, if you know anything about chlorides, you know that they're in road salt. Okay? So, based on the location of the city's water supply wells, to Highway 55, and with the chloride in the groundwater, we know then that maybe the road salt and things coming off of the highway are getting down into the groundwater. So neither of them is a problem for the city, but it tells us that it's susceptible, right? So things hitting the land surface are, have a potential to get down in the groundwater. So what we want to do with the amendment, and we would start working, we had our first meeting today, to work on that second part of that plan, is identify things that we can do, the city can do, that would help prevent any risk or contamination to the groundwater. So there isn't any in there now, so the water's great, it's safe to drink, but wellhead protection basically focuses on, is preventing, you know, things from getting down in there. And one of the things you can see is that most of the recharge area, or the surface water component, is out in the townships and in Meeger County. So one of the things we were talking about today is maybe having a working, increased working relationship with the Meeger County SWCD, along with Stearns County SWCD, to maybe work with landowners in that area and provide some awareness and some options for them to maybe do things that would be in the benefit and help the city with protecting their source of drinking water. And since Eden Valley isn't the only ones using the water, we have the City of Watkins, who, you know, based on their ability to be able to get good drinking water, is really dependent on Eden Valley protecting the source of their drinking water as well. The other thing is that most of this area, this area lies within the Sauk River watershed district, and their work is to work on maintaining and improving surface and groundwaters within the watershed. So they would be another critical partner in working to protect the surface waters that we think might be coming in contact with the groundwater that the city's pumping up. So they'd be another partner. And then, also, we have folks here from the township, letting the city know, you know, if they're gonna have any land use changes, things like that, that could potentially have an impact on the drinking water supply. That's a lot of information, I know, but basically, that's what wellhead is. It's determining what the recharge area is for a particular drinking water source, and then coming up and working with partners and other entities that are able to assist the city in managing the land uses, so that they're done in a way that would help protect that drinking water source. Any questions about that? It's a lot with the tritium, I know, and the chloride and all of that is quite, you know, technical, and there's, you know, a lot of science involved in there, but in a very simple way of saying, we have different water quality testing that can be done to help us determine what the risk is. And some public water supplies have their source of drinking water, the aquifer that they're pumping the, their drinking water from, is really deep, and it have a very thick layer of clay that's protecting it, so things that are happening on the ground surface can't get down into the aquifer. But that's not the case with the geology in this area. It's not necessarily the location of the city's wells, but how the geology was formed when, you know, things were being laid down. And that's just really how it is. We've got sand and gravel, and we've got drinking water supply wells. We've got good quality of drinking water, and the whole idea is to continue that and kind of work to maintain it. Questions? Anybody in the audience? I don't know if I just made it really confusing that nobody asked questions, or if I did a good job.
I noticed in the report that one of the wells was, had seepage or bypass, I guess. It was, we're getting contamination through one of the wellheads. Is that something we need to be concerned with?
Um...
I thought it was wellhead three, well three?
Well, yeah. I think we don't really know, based on what the well construction is, we just don't know enough whether or not it was fully grouted, or what the grouting is. Some, we could put something in the plan that could actually, we could have the well televised to see what the integrity is. I mean, that wouldn't hurt.
We had a problem with well number three when the water plant was built. It was taken out of commission for a short while to be, let's say, hyalixed, or whatever happened.
Oh, disinfected?
It was infected at the time. It was disinfected and put it back in the service. I can't tell the exact month or so, maybe. We rotate our wells monthly, is what we do, and they're tested weekly, so we know where we can check.
Yeah, from my understanding, when the hydrogeologists put together the report, there really wasn't so much concern with the well construction and the status of the wells, but more with the geology in the area and things of that nature. Things did change, you know, because the city's pumping more water, but that just means that you're drawing it from a larger area, so...
And we are in different aquifers.
Yep, that too.
And you think, as close as those wells are, it's a one aquifer, they're flowing wells? They're not.
That's what I was gonna thought.
They're not very deep.
No.
Not also not very deep. 50 feet, I think it was.
56, 58, 57.
Yeah, and just that, by its own nature, you know, makes them a little bit riskier. But going deeper wouldn't have really changed anything, because it's just sand and gravel all the way down. And Jim and I were talking earlier about looking to the east and to the west, if, you know, the location of the wells isn't very good. But it's really the same scenario. If you go east, you know, you just go towards Watkins, and you know that they had trouble getting quantities. So I think the quantity and the quality is really good at this point, but that's why it's even more imperative that you do what you can to make sure it doesn't get contaminated. And my job at the Health Department and our source water protection unit is to work with cities to ensure that we do work with other partners to help you get that done, you know? So, one, go ahead.
I noticed on the map, we don't pull very much from the north?
Nope, not at all.
All our water through this area runs northeast.
Runs to the north.
All the groundwater here, when they put these contamination wells in, we're checking, everything runs northeast.
Yeah, so this really area here, that red area, that is really where all the water's being recharged from. It would be from the south. And then the other concern we had, we talked a little bit more, and it's been a concern in the past too, is the proximity of the wells to Highway 55, and just the fact that that's a major transportation corridor, and that a good spill response plan would be helpful. So in other words, you do whatever you can in case of an emergency. If a tanker truck, you know, was to tip and spill and it was carrying some type of hazardous material, or petroleum product, or what it be, that you would have a good response to be able to manage that contaminant because of the sheer number of peoples that are reliant on that source of water. That red circle around the wells, that is a one-year time of travel, so that tells me that if there was a spill on Highway 55, and that contaminant got down into the groundwater, based on what the city's currently pumping, it would be a year or less before it would show up in the water supply. If it gets right in contact with the well, say it was flowing over land and, you know, it inundated the area around the wells, it would be even a shorter time of travel. So that's probably the highest priority area in protecting your water supply would be that either 200-foot radius around the wells, or that one-year time of travel. So I think really what we were looking for from the city council tonight was, one, we wanted to have an information meeting to make sure that, you know, people are aware of your wellhead protection plan, and that we're, you know, updating it. And then, two, to have the city council approve the first part of the plan. The way it was laid out by the Health Department, that was a service that the Health Department provided to the city, based on the size of the town. If it's a population of 3,300 or less, the Health Department has hydrogeologists that do these recharge area maps. They do a model, they run it for about a year, and then they develop these maps for the city. So it's basically you accepting the work that we've done, and letting us know that we can continue to move forward with the city in developing the rest of the plan. Once that plan is developed, we'll come back and you'll have a public hearing, and then you'll formally adopt the amended wellhead protection plan based on the Part 1 and the Part 2 that was done. I think you've already hired a consultant, Viral Resources, to do the Part 2 of the plan, so we'll be working with her to get the rest of it completed.
All right. Then I will, I'll ask Jim, is everything okay with the, you don't see anything in the report? Stands out for changes or amendments?
We're going through a lot of stuff yet. Right now, it's fine.
Okay. All right.
It's gonna be busy.
And the Water Board approved it.
They already approved it already? Okay, all right.
And we include the City of Watkins, their water operator, and their city clerk as part of the planning process to make sure that they have input, since they have a lot at stake too with the wellhead plan.
Okay, good. All right, Troy? Water?
I'm for it.
You're all for it? Okay.
Lot of information.
Yeah, it is. It's pretty technical. You know, I just go to the summaries. It seemed technical for me, and I've been doing this for 10 years, but... Oh, and I did want to mention a couple of things. We have Sarah Cho with Sauk River watershed district here, and Wayne Symbolic with Stearns County SWCD, and they are our big partners in assisting the city with implementing their wellhead protection plan. Excuse me, and then working with the property owners that they can to manage the land uses so that they're not a problem for you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. All right, with that being said, any last questions, comments?
Yeah, a lot of good information. Yeah, a lot of good information.
All right. Somebody wanna do them?
I'll make a motion to approve the waterhead protection, first phase of the waterhead protection plan.
All right, I have a motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Second by Troy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, all right, on to public forum. Oh, actually, we'll pause here for a second.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming in. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you. And if my cards have questions, you know, feel free to call.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move on to public forum. Do we have anybody in the public forum tonight? No? Then we'll go ahead and move on to tonight's consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda for the evening?
Yes.
All right. Any comments, questions, changes?
I'll take three.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Troy with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On to boards and commissions of reports. On to Planning Commission. Mr. Hondle?
Hello, how's it going?
Good.
All right, so, we had a conditional use permit application for an off-premise sign by R.A. Woodsfield and Doug Roulin. We held a public forum, and nobody was there.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. Thank you. And nobody was there, and it meets all of the requirements and setbacks, so we, the planning commission approved it, and that's about it. We'd like you to do the same.
All right. Anybody?
We should have a resolution there. That outlines the conditions on additional use.
What's it?
Where are we?
All right, I just have to give you just a moment here.
It's stapled in here.
There it is. All right. 35? Yep. Oh. Okay, all right, well, then, any questions on the resolution?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, then I will go ahead and make a resolution, make a, make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-35, Resolution approving the conditional use permit for off-premise sign. Have a second? Troy with a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Obviously, this is pending the state.
The state approval.
And I know he's aware, and he's aware of that, that we have to get notification.
Yeah, okay.
We had Derek's properties put in the application for site permit to build a storage building out on their lot. Met all the setbacks and requirements, so we approved that, and also would like you to do the same on that one.
All right, do we know when they broke ground on that? Was that before you guys did?
It was after planning.
Okay.
But yes, they broke.
All right, well, they're kind of in that gray, he's kind of floating in that gray area there, and we've...
I don't know if he ever got a notice saying that. I didn't contact him after the planning, saying that we approved it, or not, because I waited for you guys and...
Well, that's round two. We said that after the first one. That that wasn't gonna fly last year at this time, when they did that addition, if I remember correctly. Did the same thing.
I don't remember that.
He can dig without permission, he can dig.
And the poles in the ground and everything?
No.
Well...
Oh, all right.
The buildings, the poles are up already.
And the pole, and he's got, oh, he's almost got the outer shell put up already. Yeah, I, I, I get it, you know, this time of year, weather, you know, you can't count on the weather, but, I mean, you know, there's, if he was really trying, wanting to beat the weather, he could've came in and asked for a special, special meeting to get his permit expedited, so...
Do you have, I'm not aware, maybe I should've looked at that before, but do, do we know if we have anything in a fee if they break ground earlier, they start constructing beforehand?
Don't, I don't think we do. It's, it's been one of those things, and...
Nothing really stops them from doing it anyway, then?
No.
Really?
No, it's just one of those things. It's more, it's, it's more of just breaking a procedure.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, they definitely shouldn't do it, but they don't have any ramifications if they do do it, so...
I thought we talked about that the last round.
He wasn't here the last round.
No, but I thought we talked about that, because we said the same thing. You know, just let them know that wasn't gonna fly, and now we got the building half That's setting a precedent that it doesn't matter, and I'm not okay with that.
I agree with Troy.
I'm not okay with that at all, since this came back, this is the second time, and now we got the building half up. So, it's gotta be done, because everybody's gonna start doing this. If one guy's gonna keep doing it, we're all gonna do it. I mean, that's just how it's gonna go. And if we're gonna do this on, if we're going, running the gamut on pushing these people on rental and this and that, it doesn't fly. We gotta keep everything the same. You can't, it doesn't work that way.
Well, I mean, we as a council are gonna come up with a fee or penalty that, for that, because apparently, we don't have something now, so that it doesn't happen next time, or at least if it happens the next time, we got something to go about, go on.
I thought we talked about that.
We maybe did, but I don't think we followed through with it.
We did, but we didn't, we didn't establish a, we didn't establish a fine for that.
So what happens in this case? Nothing.
We got no bite in this one. We gotta, well, we gotta...
We'll punt again.
Well, not punting it.
Yeah, we are.
We're gonna go, we'll put this on the agenda for workshop.
So what does he get out of it? We're punting again. Round two. That's gotta change. So, yeah, we gotta get it on the books, let's go.
All right. All right, anything further?
Not on that one. And then we had a application to open a...
Excuse me.
We should probably do, yeah, why don't we do that before you jump to the next one here? Anybody?
I make a motion to accept the...
To approve the site permit?
Right.
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, on the next one.
Then we had a business application for a tattoo shop that would like to open up a business on State Street. So, according to the zoning board and code, that it's not listed under permitted uses, but use is determined by the planning commission to be similar to those listed in this division. And we went through it and kind of found some that would meet it. You have that list there in front of you. So we, the planning committee approved it. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
What, 253, is that twice as nice?
Yes.
Okay. All right, somebody bought the bill, somebody bought it.
This application is specific for this business at this address. The planning commission is not requesting that you put tattoo powder, tattoo shop as a permitted use. That would take a separate public hearing. This is very specific to this application, in that it does, the city code allows the planning commission, if it's similar in nature, or if they find it similar to a permitted use.
Okay. Okay, so they're just, they're just relating it to an existing use and allowing it to go through. Do you need, do we need to approve it too? Okay, all right. Then, if you got nothing else on that?
Nope.
All right, then I'll go ahead and make a, make a motion to approve the conditional, is it conditional use, or permitted use?
It's not, it would be allowing this as...
Just allowing it? Okay. Then I will go ahead and make a motion to allow the, does he have a name for the business? State Street Tattoo, at 253 State Street North.
Second.
Pat with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right.
Then on to rental. We have two units that are past due, 381 Brook Street, and that's the one that went in for closure that I talked to you guys about last time. I haven't heard any word on if that's closed yet, or where the process is on that. And then 413 White Avenue South. I sent Chad Los a letter telling that he needed to renew it. I called him, and he said, "Yeah, I'm aware of it," and that was about a month ago, and I haven't heard anything from him. I haven't got any application or payment or anything from him. So I don't know if you guys want me to send him another letter, or, and threaten to send it to the lawyer, if you want me to go directly to the lawyer, or they call me the city attorney son. Or they call me to turn for the city attorney side. Not sure how you guys want me to handle that one.
You said that it was about a month ago?
Yeah.
You sent that letter to him?
I sent the letter to him.
And talked to him?
Month and a half ago, and then I called him about a month ago, but I didn't see anything from him.
When's the expiration?
That was in September.
Okay, so we're, we're way overdue. Now, I am of the minds that we, we have Adam take a look at it.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, if he, in my mind, if he acknowledged that it, that it needs to be done and he hasn't done anything about it, then.
Yeah, he's letting him, letting him ignore it at this point.
Yep. Alright.
Okay, and then I had five properties that got licenses issued for September and October. I added September on there because I didn't have a written report fee last month, so I'll just do that on there for you. Um, then I got two inspections coming in November and eight renewals that are coming in December.
Okay. Questions? Are the other inspections going okay?
So far, so good.
So good?
Pretty decent, so.
Did we ever get licensed, or did we ever corner the grocery store?
Uh, that is coming up on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay. Alright, anything else for Darren?
Nope.
Alright, well, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Darren.
And, let's see, on to, uh, EDA. Let's see, so, our last EDA meeting, I'll pull up my notes here, at least the agenda. Sorry, I should have been more prepared. Alright, so, uh, for the, um, for the EDA, uh, basically, we, uh, working on, uh, with David Te- or we've been working with David Test because of the city on the property, uh, that he wants to add some more rental units. The old, it's the apartments, or the townhomes across from the elementary school. They're, he's looking at, he'd be able to put, uh, put some more like units on that property, providing that he could gain another thirty to fifty feet to the, uh, to the west of his property. So, um, Cindy's been heading up, talking with the school on, uh, on, on what, uh, what path, what, what kind of deal that we could put together uh, to, um, set up something to acquire that property or, or facilitate some type of land swap or money swap or whatever on that, so. Unless you got, you need an update from the meeting, no, okay. Then on the Meeker County EDA, um, you know, they had formally asked if we wanted to, um, attend the, kind of a follow-up, the housing study, uh, which we agreed to. Um, then, um, there is, on the Meeker County side, um, there is a concept called opportunity zones. Litchfield currently has one. Um, there are, the Meeker County EDA, or actually, it's the development court part of, uh, part of the EDA is sponsored, is bringing in, uh, uh, an expert in that type of area, and I plan on going to that to the next, on the twelfth. Going and sitting down and learning some more about what an opportunity zone. Basically, it's kind of complex, but it kind of boil it down to like the fifty thousand foot view. Um, it, an opportunity zone is like a public-private partnership of sorts to, uh, pretend, you know, to identify an area that you, that you want to lock, basically lock in for development at a further, at a, at a future date. So I'll, I'll learn more on that, iron, you know, our next, actually by our workshop, I'll be able to give you guys a little bit more detail on how that, uh, and if that's something that potentially that we might want to as, as an EDA, you know, as our EDA to take a look at, so. Um, and then we talked about Brookview, um, talked about that. Uh, the purchase order agreement, um, has been signed and sent over, we're just now waiting on, uh, we got everything taken care of with the bond council, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just waiting on the closing date?
Yeah, and there's a question for December first.
December first, or, okay. Alright. Okay, anything, any questions for me?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, then we will move along to parks. Do we have anything, any, any update for the parks tonight?
Um, I see that Jeff Windroth had put the landscape brick around the splash pad. And it looks very nice.
Yeah, I did get a chance to go out there and take a look at that, that is, that is, I looked, really dresses up that area nice. Glad you guys went with that.
And I think Cindy's been looking at that second phase on, on what kind of grant that we can apply for the second phase of that park.
So I did talk to, uh, the DNR, we received the final money, uh, minus ten thousand, they hold ten thousand until they come and inspect. And because the splash pad wasn't operating, they couldn't do the inspection, they want to see it all running. So they'll come up next weekend and do that final, but she did say go ahead and apply for, you know, another DNR grant for the next phase. So the park, what we need to go with the next phase.
Excellent.
We do have someone who would like to donate a refrigerator to the park. And, um, just, and I expressed just that, that council needs to, okay, whether or not we want to have appliances there at the park. Um, there's, and it's nice to have a refrigerator, but it also involves, um, extra cleaning and, uh, it's gonna be running, so. And there's that, I don't think the refrigerator costs very much to run, but it's still running and some of those foods, I want us going to clean it, so. Um, so I'd like to bring that back to the council, just because there will be a cost minimum, but there'll be costs to having it there.
I know eventually, as part of the, you know, like the long-term plans was to have the, the kitchen area furnished at some point. So, and, and if the refrigerator is in good, you know, I, I, I'm assuming it's a used one?
Yeah.
I would say that if it's, you know, if, you know, Jim, I hate to put you on the spot, you know, but if it's in decent condition and, you know, it's clean, I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, I, I agree too. They need something down there for, to put some, the cold food in, other than coolers.
Alright, then I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the donation of the refrigerator.
Second.
Pat with a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Okay. Anything else on the parks side of things? No?
Is that park open for business now? For, I don't, I don't.
It's shut down now.
But I mean, the building?
Yeah.
It's shut down as well?
Yeah. And I think you're gonna start taking reservations?
Yes, after January first.
Okay.
We decided for auditing purposes, we wanted to wait till twenty twenty before we take it. Any checks on it, so.
Alright.
After January first.
Alright. Okay, on to tonight, uh, on to the bills. Everybody had a chance to take a look at the bills for the evening?
Yes.
Alright, any questions? Comments, concerns?
No, I don't have any.
Nope.
Anyone? Duty honors?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Alright, and Pat with a motion to pay the bills?
A second.
Jan with the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Nays, nope. Motion passes. Alright, on to hiring committee, establishing a hiring committee for public works director position.
As you know, the applications, I think, are due the thirteenth of November, and we do have some applications. So, at that time, the hiring committee is going to need to meet and go over the applications. They're not public until you determine to go in for interview, so it's not something that I can email you or send out, they're not public. Uh, so you need to come here and visit, and look at them. And then interviews, when we talked before, would be somewhere in, uh, November. From that point on till about the twenty-sixth, this is doing interviewing, so that at the December meeting, they'll be bringing your recommendation to the council. Whoever that is on the hiring committee. And I know we have a street superintendent and a law pursuer superintendent on council, so whether or not they are the hiring committee, I'm assuming. We're gonna want your public, current public works director on the committee. But we want to get it set before your next meeting.
I don't know if I can, you know, depending on the time of day, that the meetings or the interviews you're being at.
When we, um, when we did the hiring for the clerk treasurer position, we did our interviews that evening. Because sometimes these, these candidates, you know, they, they.
They gotta work too.
They got jobs too, so, you know, we usually held them in the evening.
Guess if it's in the evening, I can. During the day, it's tough. We'll have to.
And I know, I know it's extremely tough for you this time of the year, you know.
We're getting there, about a month ago.
Yeah.
If it's in the evening, I don't have a problem.
Okay, alright, then Pat and Troy?
Yeah.
Awesome. I was hoping you guys would. Alright, on to, uh, let's see, department updates. Cindy?
Uh, I, we should have the financial report in front of you. I, uh, before the financial report, I, if I hadn't talked to Dan on this building, it would, um, it would have gone down. And it looks like next week is their whole facility, starts this process, so. And we've got a meeting between meetings, and getting going on, on the construction of the outside as well as in here. Um, and the lights are fixed outside.
See that?
Yeah. This is a timer issue, I guess. Apparently, there was a timer, I don't know if it was what I do now, so, we're gonna go on that. Uh, financial report I have before you. Um, this is for, through October thirty-first. And currently in cash and investments, we have two million eighty-five, one fifty-nine, twenty-four. And November and December is tax and LGA time, so, um, we will be getting, obviously, our, the remainder of our tax and the last third of our LGA.
So the money for healthy communities hasn't been transferred out of that fund into the other funds yet?
I just had to look at the transfer fund.
Okay.
Tonight, and then we have not received, uh, I requested, um, from the EBC for P or the combined with the chamber, they said they put something in writing that we're requesting, and I know that was a, a concern of, I don't know if concern is a bad word, but when the council agreed to have money be spent on the roll top and park, there was a remaining balance, and I know that, um, the council had said what's gonna happen with the remaining balance, so. At the meeting, I just said, put something in writing that says, where's this money going and what's gonna happen with it, and, and they haven't done that yet, but I think they have a meeting coming up.
Yeah, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, meeting on, meeting on the thirteenth.
Alright.
Yeah.
Then the roll top are both in, and that bill is in there, so.
Okay.
And under the six thousand.
Nice.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody got anything, anything else, Cindy?
Uh, the community center, did you want, the conference room, did you want to ask about that?
Um, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna put that under other, but since you, we'll, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and do it now. So, as part of the new, uh, you know, the, the relaunch of the, uh, chamber of commerce with the, with the addition of the assist for progress, uh, one of the things that we're looking at doing going forward to try to, or say, as a larger effort of reorganizing the, the whole group, um, one of the things that, that became, uh, kind of, it came, came to my attention was with the, uh, with the documents for the chamber, you know, past meeting minutes, financial, and financial statements, that stuff was being stored at people's houses. Um, I don't think, um, that's, I don't think that's a good idea, um, just having, having, you know, nonprofit information sitting there. So, uh, one of the things that I was going to ask you guys about tonight, um, as, actually, as the chairman of the board for the chamber of commerce, is if you guys would be okay with allowing the chamber to utilize the back conference room. Uh, we would, you know, find a locking filing cabinet that we can put in that room that we can lock up, you know, not the more sensitive documents, not like, uh, like the checkbook or any of that stuff, but like the, you know, past meeting minutes, printed out, you know, uh, statements. Uh, things that we can store in there for that, and also use that as our, as our board meeting place, uh, going forward, so.
As far as the board meeting place, I mean, that's kind of what it's for, use it. I guess I don't have a problem with you storing documents in there if there's room.
You guys are good with it, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm part of the board, so I don't know if I can contribute or not, but, yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Yeah, do we need to do, do a motion on that? I think that's just a.
No, I think it's more just a general, uh, question on it, it's, it's open to people to rent and to book, so. When we have talked about it, certainly needs to be a file cabinet that's locked, it's not, they're not gonna have boxes on a desk, and, because there are people who rent that, because it's smaller and it's nice, we can rent both, so it's not that they're occupying it as a rent to space for their office, but it's.
And then, then we're not storing that stuff at somebody's house anymore, you know, eventually, maybe we'll be able to get to a point where we can start doing more of that stuff, storing it online. But, you know, for right now, for, um, one of the things, you know, with the nonprofit status with the state of Minnesota and, and, uh, future nonprofit status with the federal government, I'm sure there's some of those records, we're gonna, even, even records that we have currently that are in physical copies are gonna need to be hung on to for a while for, for audit purposes, so. Just wanna make sure we've got a, got a safe place to keep that stuff. Alright, well, thank you. Alright.
One other thing on the community center, you and Dan were talking about, asking me, I got one bid so far.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you about that in your section. If Cindy doesn't have anything, I'll, I'll jump right to you, um, yeah.
I've got one bid so far.
One bid so far, okay.
Dan and Brent came out of the meeting in Denton, south side of the community center, really dark on the sidewalk. They're looking at, they're asking, getting bids on two wall packs over the sidewalks.
And just basically light up that south side of the building a little bit more, so they're.
It is dark.
Especially, I mean, we've got Narcotics Anonymous uses that building, uses it regularly.
Timer versus dusted on, I have one. I'll get both bids.
Okay.
You guys can choose.
Alright, thanks. So what else you got?
That's all on the community center, you were just on that, so I thought you had that.
Well, we'll put, yeah, we'll, we'll put you on, we'll put you on the spot.
I know, I got you.
You started talking, it's, no, it's you.
Tag, you're it.
I'm in. I'm quitting. Uh, we finished backing the storm shores this week, culverts and all, I got one culvert that's still got a bunch of sand in, it's kind of froze right now.
It's kinda froze right now, so, it, it'll float, not a problem. It'll have to be vacuumed next spring. Finished up with most of the street work, weather became a problem for us. I'm gonna have to do some shoulder and hip, but piles are kinda hard. But they'll also survive. And we're cleaning up the brush site the best we can, getting the leaves and that all hauled out, so that's my lives for the year. Meeker REA also came to town today. Well, they are boring in the new fiber lines, they're gonna, came in yesterday, two days ago, and they were gone, but... Showed us a map of where they plan on getting to this year, hopefully. So, till goes long as it can, they're coming in from the east, and they poured some lines underneath the railroad tracks today.
Okay, yeah, I seen that, I seen the...
That's Meeker REA now, that's not...
Meeker Co-op.
Meeker Co-op, yes. I'm sure you're all aware of it, and they're here.
Yeah, those that, that aren't, there has been enough, well, with their, their vibrant broadband services that they're, that they're deploying in their service area, they've actually got quite a few people from Eden Valley calling and asking for, asking for services, so they have actually decided to bring, bring services, wired services into town. You know, they're starting the process of doing that, so... Plus, I also found out that Arby, actually, you found out that Arby was bringing, they're, they're doing something similar too.
Eventually.
Eventually. So, yeah, I, I gotta, you know, I gotta, I gotta say that, that's, that's really promising for, for those that have been looking for, you know, looking for, you know, better internet service, or, or something a little bit different, so...
They're having an informational meeting here on November twenty-sixth, Meeker Cooperative.
That's right. What time was that, seven o'clock? Open to the public, I assume?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, it's a public informational meeting.
I will definitely be here for that.
Otherwise, things are going pretty good.
Excellent. Anybody got anything for, for Jim?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, on to Ernie.
Got the monthly report, if you got any questions on that. Same, same, running pretty average. On traffic stuff, but I'm gonna ask about the same. Halloween went real well, Eden Valley Fire Department was out, which I think is really a good thing. Overall, trick or treaters were way down in my shape for some reason. I'm not quite sure why, I don't know, I'm not sure why, but it was...
Pretty cool out there, I think.
Yeah, it was chilly, but, and it was, it was down, so, which, probably the weather had something to do with it. But the fire department was out, and we were out, and everything worked really well that night. I haven't got anything on a new squad yet, no ship date, no build date on that. Somebody knows someone, I'll let you know. Other than that, I don't know anything else.
Okay. Anybody got anything for Ernie? I, I do want to, do wanna recognize the, the fire department on, on doing what they did.
Safe telephone, please.
Fire and rescue? All right, yeah. Oh, other, yeah, all right, the fire and rescue. By driving through that night for Halloween, seeing the different, the different stations they had set up to monitor, you know, walkers and traffic and that stuff, and having the slow-moving sign, you know, slowdown signs, that was, I, that was, that was awesome. That was awesome.
Yeah, we appreciate the help, I mean, I'm glad they decided to start doing that, so it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
And we can make the kids safer, it's a good thing.
Awesome, all right. Let's see, I was gonna talk about the chamber stuff, we already talked about that. Yeah, I don't have anything else, any things, council?
I think we got it.
You think we got it all? All right. All right, so the next thing we got here is upcoming meeting, we got a November twentieth council, council meeting, that will, all workshop, that will also be, well, that'll be a budget workshop, just finalizing our budget numbers for the year. So if we get that, it shouldn't be too, too bad, that way we can do our public hearing on the first meeting in December.
Okay, and that's at seven?
Yeah, at seven o'clock. And then, that'll be the, probably the first time in five years that we haven't had to have a special meeting just to approve our budget. All right, anyway, all joking aside, anything, anybody have? All right, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
I get Pat the second, all in favor?
Aye.